Exhibit two are comments that were issued from the Lawrence County Planning Commission dated February seventeen, two thousand sixteen. Exhibit three is the advertisement as submitted by Attorney Solomon for the original hearing for February twenty second. It lists basically ten amendments. For our purposes, attachment two, it's listed at the top. These are proposed amendments to the Wilmington Township's oil and gas ordinance dated January nineteen, two thousand sixteen. And I believe that was issued by the Wilmington Township Planning Commission. And for historical purposes, exhibit number five, which is marked as ordinance number three of two thousand fifteen. You could be so kind as to pass these exhibits down, so our staff may attach those to the transcripts. The hearing this evening, we're going to take public comment. And we're going to enforce our rules concerning public comment this evening. And I have a number of individuals that have filled out a public comment form. So when I call your name, or if I say your name incorrectly, please do not hesitate to correct me. So we're going to start with our public comment. Lauren Hickman, two-two-four Beechwood Road, the floor is yours, sir.
I'd be delighted to pass.
Okay. You're welcome. Karen Wallace.
I have time limits?
Absolutely.
Which is?
Four minutes.
Although fracking industry proponents scoff at any intimation their so-called vital industry poses even scant risk to the public, a new study published in Toxicology and Applied Pharmacology proved those critics right. Fracking wastewater causes cancer. Using human bronchioepithelial cells, which are commonly used to measure the carcinogens of toxicants, researchers confirmed fracking flowback water from the Marcellus shale caused the formation of malignancies. After conducting further tests on live mammalian subjects, researchers-
Leave me on like what?
Mammalian? Mammalian, I have a copy.
Thank you.
I'll give you.
That would be great.
Yeah.
On live mammalian cells, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Uh, subjects, mammalian subjects. Researchers found five of six mice injected with cells transformed from well water treatments developed tumors as early as three months after injections, including a tumor in one mouse that grew to over one centimeter in size in just five months. A controlled group did not develop any tumors for the six months of the study period. According to the study performed by scientists from the Department of Environmental Medicine, as well as biochemistry and molecular pharmacology at New York University, and esteemed partners from universities in China, results indicate fracking flowback water causes cancer. Implications of the report's findings would be difficult to overstate considering how fracking wastewater is generated, stored, and treated, and how often spills, leaks, and even the wastewater injection process itself can lead to contamination of the potable supply. A concise but thorough explanation of the fracking process can be found. Naturally. Concerns about the contents and impacts of the wastewater are the reason researchers studied its effects. Metal pollution is a serious problem as they are taken up readily in the digestive tract and exhibit harmful effects on many creatures. Barium and strontium are abundant in the Marcellus shale formation, and are easily dissolved and transported in wastewater after gas drilling activity, which could potentially cause a threat to drinking water. In fact, in two thousand fourteen, environmental consulting firm Downstream Strategies diligently attempted to track fracking water from Marcellus shale drilling. Both water withdrawn from sources for use in the process as well as wastewater, but found it could be a nearly impossible task. Rigid regulatory requirements that would otherwise divulge where those massive quantities of water end up are simply not in place. Each day, oil and gas producers generate two billion gallons of wastewater, Duke Professor Rob Jackson stated. Though the disposal site near Blackfoot Creek has since ostensibly agreed to stop storing or treating, the industry is far from clean or transparent. They produce more wastewater than higher carbons. That's the broader impact of the Duke study. We have to do something with this wastewater. Considering the Marcellus shale study and the now proven cancer link, fracking wastewater just became enormously important to millions of people living near thousands of wells in the United States as well as other countries. As the Downstream Strategies researchers found, due to lack of regulatory reporting requirements for the fracking industry, aided greatly by its exemption from the Safe Drinking Water Act, the fate of sixty-two percent of fracking waste is unknown. Researchers for the carcinogenic eliciting study.
That's a nice ending. I'll mark this, um, six. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Carrie Hahn.
Carrie Hahn, nine-nine-four Indian Run Road, Delant. For the record, I must begin by asking a question. When did the Wilmington Township Planning Commission vote to recommend these proposed amendments?
Ma'am, we're not here to answer any-
I understand, I was just going to say, I understand that you are not to answer any questions.
Sure.
But I attended and recorded both the January and the February planning meetings. And at neither meeting were they able to reach an agreement on the language of the proposed amendments before the township tonight. The supervisor had previously requested that they work on the ten amendments and draft the language for that. I would also like to request and to be sure that all four advertisements for tonight's meetings are admitted to the record. In reviewing the ten proposed amendments to the oil and gas ordinance, there was a debate at the January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, planning meeting regarding who should hire third-party consultants. Recently, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, or Superior Court, sorry, ruled that Range Resources must release all relevant information from an environmental study by a company that they hired to the plaintiffs in the Kiskaden and Haney case, which is now being appealed to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. And it's a perfect example of why it is so critically important that the selection and hiring of third-party consultants should be at the landowner or township discretion and not by the applicant. The reports from these experts are owned by the client and therefore are under the client's control. If the oil and gas industry is the client of the expert on sound water and soil testing, et cetera, then they alone control the availability of its results to the landowners and to the township. Next, according to the Newcastle News article published on January twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, property owners who have well pads and compressor stations on their land will now be assessed at an industrial rate, not agricultural. Only the actual area of the well pad or compressor, the disturbed area, will come under the new assessment, not the remainder of the surrounding land. This is considered spot assessing and has so far only been appealed by one property owner. Similarly, it should be considered spot zoning by this township. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court's decision on Act thirteen explicitly recognized the industrial nature of unconventional gas development. Municipalities must balance property rights with constitutionally protected right to clean air, pure water, and the rights of present and future generations to healthy public natural resources. Likewise, municipalities must balance the property rights of all those in a community as all community members, not just the ones with oil and gas leases, have the right to the use and enjoyment of their property. To comply with these constitutional mandates, a municipality simply cannot allow industrial development in non-industrial zones. Finally, unconventional gas drilling is an industrial process and should only be permitted in industrial zones. And I have a copy of my statement as well as the article about the Haney and Kiskaden case.
Thank you so much. I'll mark that as seven and eight. Bill Hahn.
Hi, Bill Hahn, Wilmington Township, Lawrence County. I have a couple of things that I would like to address tonight. First, at the last planning meeting last Tuesday, February sixteen, the commissioners said they were tasked by the supervisors to incorporate the ten points recommended by Jonathan Solomon into the oil and gas ordinance. As of that meeting, the planning commissioners were still working to agree upon language around those ten points. Therefore, I'd really like to know what this public hearing is all about, if there's no agreed-upon language that the planning commissioners submitted to the supervisors for review.
I'm not here to answer questions. It's a public hearing. The floor is yours.
Since it sounds like the ordinance is being revisited, judging by the planning commission meeting, I would like to ask what the due diligence the supervisors have gone through, not only in this version of the ordinance, but versions that have been worked on over the past two years. Here's a letter that was sent to the township supervisors on October fifth, two thousand fifteen. The letter was addressed to the address, the letter addresses zoning around the oil and gas ordinances and asks the supervisors what processes they have gone through. To date, the letter has never been responded to by the supervisors. My understanding is that they must present their processes and due diligence used while determining what is best for the township. Never have the supervisors done this, which means me to question their true understanding of the oil and gas drilling process. I'd really like to understand what the due diligence and the process they've gone through and what they truly know about the process. Unconventional oil and gas drilling is an industrial process. Thousands of gallons of water and hundreds of different chemicals are used in hydraulic factoring. If you took the land surrounding an oil and gas well, flipped it over, and looked at the infrastructure that you would see, I think everyone would agree that it's bigger, more invasive, and more industrial than a paint plant or anything else that is also an industrial process. But since you only see about a four to five acre area after the land is reclaimed, and about a ten acre area on a compressor station, people don't always realize how much industrial process, chemicals, and everything else is used in the process. While taking the oath of office, each supervisor had to swear to support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States as well as the Pennsylvania Constitution. Article one, section twenty-seven of the Pennsylvania Constitution states that the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and the preservation of natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. Please help me to understand how allowing unconventional oil and gas drilling on anything other than industrial site upholds the oath above as it relates to the Pennsylvania Constitution. The process has proven over and over negative impacts on water, lower air quality, and reduced property values. How is this a good thing for our community?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the record.
Number nine. Joanne Wilson, please.
My name's Joanne Wilson. I live at five-four-five Fayette and Shannon Falls Road. I didn't know you weren't allowed to answer, so what I had were some questions after attending the planning commissioner meeting last week that I found very confusing. It was announced that you, the supervisors, requested them to bundle or combine the proposed ten amendments with the December two thousand fifteen oil and gas ordinance. So I, in wondering what to say this evening, I wasn't quite sure what I was to comment on because I didn't know if it was on the amendments, because I am not clear, this is the second point, what the proposed ordinance amendment actually amends. So somewhere in the body of perhaps the explanation, it would be helpful to know what specifically is being amended and whether it's from the oil and gas ordinance of two thousand fifteen or two thousand fourteen. It's a confusing issue anyway, and it was very confusing last Tuesday evening. Thank you.
You're welcome. Harold Hutchison.
I'm Harold Hutchison, Nashar Road, Wilmington Township. I speak tonight very disturbed with the recommendation for amending the two thousand fifteen ordinance, which was drawn up by the planning committee chaired by Mr. Kingery and the departed Mr. Solomon. The two thousand fifteen ordinance was passed by the board on the second hearing. What changed in the ordinance between the first and second vote? Nothing. Now, two months later, the planning committee chaired by Mr. Kingery and Mr. Solomon come forth with ten amendments to correct their two thousand fifteen hurriedly passed flawed ordinance. The board is required to hold a meeting to listen to the people. Unfortunately, they are not required to hear the people. In my opinion, the drafting of the proposed amendments was heard by the gas and oil companies and not the people. Let's review the amendments. I'm confused on the amendments, and it looks to me like amendment one, drilling shall be conducted by a closed-loop system that eliminates onsite retention pits. Number two, drilling shall be conducted by use of green completion systems instead of flaring the gas and so on. Item three, items number one and two shall be required unless the applicant can demonstrate that drilling cannot effectively be accomplished by those systems, and an alternative system is necessary in order to extract the gas. Amazing.
Yeah.
In the event that an onsite retention pit is made necessary, number one says they can't use a pit like that. By conditions at the well site, there may not be any storage of natural material generated. Compressor stations, this is a good one. Compressor stations must be fueled either by natural gas or by electricity and not by diesel motors in order to reduce the noise, unless the applicant shall demonstrate that adequate compression cannot be achieved except by diesel. Screening by mounding soils, solid fencing, and/or planting evergreen trees and shrubs strategically around a compressor station or enclosure with a building or other sound muffling system may be required if necessary. The next two are not, they're changes in the old ordinance. Then the nine and ten, which disturbs me a little bit. Township used to have a cap on what we paid engineers and consultants. Mr. Solomon has taken care of the engineering consultants by having those caps lifted. So now it's up to somebody to decide whether what they're charging is whether it's good or bad. As I see it, the gas and oil companies can basically write their own rules. If you cannot drill by our rules, submit your plans. What is it about no, you do not understand? I suggest repealing the flawed two thousand fifteen ordinance instead of amending it. Throw up a new ordinance which the board, the landowners, and the oil companies. Thank you.
Cherry Potte.
Hello, I'm Cherry Potte. I live at one-ninety-three Beechwood Road in Wilmington. I also would like to agree with Mr. Hutchinson that I would prefer that the supervisors abandon the two thousand fifteen ordinance and go back to the two thousand fourteen ordinance, which was worked on over a very extended period of time and had a lot of good provisions in it. But failing that, I would ask that, I would urge the supervisors to adopt the ten amendments that were first proposed by Mr. Solomon, and as I understand it, recommended by the planning commission at the meeting in January nineteenth. I think those amendments add additional protections to the two thousand fifteen ordinance that should be adopted. I also request that you further strengthen the protections for property owners with regards to unconventional gas wells. As several of the speakers have pointed out, unconventional gas wells are very different than the conventional wells that we're used to and need to be zoned differently and addressed differently in the zoning ordinance. I would ask that you increase the setbacks from what's being considered to provide further protection for adjoining property owners. I would also request that you provide that compressor stations should be in industrial areas only. They are an industrial and commercial use of land. They're not temporary use. They're there for ten, twenty, or more years. They have motors, they have noise, they have emissions, and those should properly be in an industrial zone and not in an agricultural zone. I also request that you clarify these new amendments to require that compressor stations be installed in a building. As pointed out by the prior speaker, the proposal has an exception that if the oil and gas company can present a reason, they can avoid having a compressor station in a building. But a building is very important for reducing noise and emissions. It protects the public, and I think that if anyone who's been reading the paper for the last six, eight months, you can see from what's happened in neighboring townships how difficult it is to get an oil and gas company to put down a building after it's been built. So it's really important that you acquire a building when a compressor station is installed. I also ask that the supervisors take into account the unique characteristics of our township. We've got Amish traveling on the roads, and buggies, and walking. With the amount of truck traffic we're going to have with unconventional drilling, we need to take that into consideration. There are also a large number of homes with water from wells and a large number of abandoned and orphaned shallow wells. So in light of that, I would request that you adopt the water testing proposal that Dallas Hartman proposed that would provide additional protection for neighboring landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Staley.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Krista Staley, and I'm an attorney of basketball companies on the, I'll get you a card. I'm here on behalf of Hill Corp. and Chevron, and we understand, they understand that it's too early to be commenting on the ordinance because the ordinance hasn't been assimilated and drafted yet. But they have provided some comments on the ten points that have been raised. They provided them to the planning commission, so I have extra copies here for you to review, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Al, looks like R-U-T-Y-N-E-R. Did I get that right, sir?
R-U-T-Y-N-A.
Thank you.
My handwriting's terrible. Al Roten, and I've spoken numerous times at this supervisor's meeting regarding property values. I'm just going to give you a further update. I own property at Destin Air. I've owned it for about thirteen years. I plan to build a retirement home there. And ever since we started this about fracking in the township, I put that property up for sale because right next door in my backyard is Schwartz Property, which was the first fracking site, I believe. And so far, I've had six calls on the property, and I've told you about a couple of them. Where the people asked about fracking, and I told them. And the comments I've received is they would be absolutely foolish to put a very expensive home in that neighborhood and then just watch the property value disappear. So far, I can tell you that there is no reduction in property value because nobody is buying. You can't sell that property now. Even if I put it down seventy-five percent, or I mean fifty percent, I might not even get a buyer because people are that afraid of fracking. And the homes in Destin Air, let me tell you, they've been on the market a very long time. So I have to agree with Carrie that you need to put this in an industrial site. You're killing the property values. If you put these sites in, you're going to kill property values. People aren't going to be able to sell. And nobody wants to buy. I'm just telling you, it just makes common sense. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Angelo Paper.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. I wanted to make sure I filled out your form there. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Hahn. And I just wanted to make sure, it just seems to me that at this juncture in what we're doing, they, no question, they have standing. I'm their attorney, and I wanted to make sure, whatever form, each township seems to have different forms. I wanted to make sure the board recognized that I was counsel for them. And we certainly are objecting to the ordinance on numerous grounds. And what we're also doing is I just want to make sure I protect the record to say that we're probably objecting to substantive and procedural due process ways that this is being handled. And I'm not going to argue, a legal argument in front of you, and I even set my phone on stopwatch. And Lou, you know me better than anybody. I've never been able to say anything in four minutes, but I'll do the best I can. But I do want to put this on the record to preserve all of my clients' rights. And I would say one more thing, too. I've run into this young lady many times. We've been in different townships, so it's no covered roads. I'm hoping that you realize what you have. All the law, as I see it for twenty-eight years' experience, seems to be leaning toward the local people having control over this rather than some state judicial system or whatever, or some state legislative system. That power vests in you an obligation that corresponds with that power to take the individual neighborhoods and the individual people, like these people coming here doing the best they can with their notes, and reconcile the two so everybody could live in harmony. I haven't heard one person that says they're against fracking. They're just against fracking in a certain place. They just think that they can live together, and I'm asking that as we journey through this procedure, we would keep our eye on that opportunity. You have to work peace throughout an industry and local citizenry so that people in ours and agriculture areas don't lose everything they have in property values, and maybe we can still responsibly cultivate our natural resources. Maybe, just maybe, both can live together, and you have an excellent opportunity to enact the best ordinance possible. And I think that would start by listening more to these people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else this evening that did not fill out a form that would like to fill one out and speak before we adjourn? Okay, no one taking me up on that offer this evening? If we can have a motion to adjourn, please.
A point of wonder, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn needs to be seconded, obviously.
I asked for one.
I know, you didn't get one yet. That's why it popped up.
Okay.
Before you get one and you discuss the motion, can we at least know why we're here?
The advertisement is in the paper.
Okay, so it's limited to that description?
Yeah, the advertisement was in the paper. Obviously, we want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, and I think we did do that, and
Several of them didn't seem to know what we were doing.
The exhibits are marked, and anybody could have came up- The exhibits are marked, and anybody could have came up at any time during the hearing and reviewed them and asked questions on it. But I didn't see anyone come up to take a look at any of the exhibits or to ask any questions on it, so, um-
Well, they weren't allowed to ask questions.
Yeah, I didn't know we could.
Okay, well-
I wasn't aware that we had that opportunity.
I misspoke and said ask questions. Anyone could come up and take a look at the material, you'll make a statement, okay?
Now, that said, can we supplement something later?
The, the record's open, as you can see, I let everyone that wanted to submit something, submit it, I marked them as exhibits, and we're going to have the testimony transcribed and the exhibits attached. And if we have a future hearing, which I'm sure we will-
Then we can supplement.
Then we would have that record here.
Fair, thank you.
And that's what we want to try to be is fair, and get everyone their say, and provide all the exhibits that they can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second. Roll call.
You have left, my call ahead.
Yes.
Any trouble?
Yes. Thank you.